Thank you for joining us for our financial virtual town hall. We are going to get started in just a couple of minutes. But just to get a little bit of housekeeping out of the way first. So we are recording this town hall and we will share it with the college community in CC Daily, probably on Monday. After the presentations by President Hughes and Vice President Albritton, we are going to have a Q and A. And what I have in my screen, I have the questions. And so what I'll do is if I can, this is a little bit of a new twist on our town halls. Either I will read the question aloud to President Hughes or Vice President Albritton. Or if I can figure out a way, I will unmute the individual person and they can answer the question directly. We have an hour to spend this afternoon. If we don't get to all of the questions, we will, as we have done in the past, respond later and I will share those with Vice President Albritton and her team. And I think, other than that, we are pretty good to go. So it is my pleasure to introduce President Megan Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us on a Friday afternoon. My purpose this afternoon is simply to frame up what Dr. Albritton will be walking us through this afternoon. And before I do that, I want to just very briefly thank all of you for the effort you have put into reopening this college over the last two and a half weeks. I know that it is additional effort for all of you, whether you're teaching in a classroom or working in our buildings or advising and serving our students. I really appreciate it and I want to especially right now, thank Vice President Albritton's team, who really pulled together to get us ready for this town hall and is also simultaneously preparing the FY23 budget. So I know there have been some long days and I want to thank that entire team for the effort to make today and our budget presentation coming up shortly possible. So what I'd love to do now is just give you all a sense of how we'll use the time this afternoon. And so Kristin is going to walk us through just where we are right now. What is our financial position projected to look like for this fiscal year? And as a reminder for everyone, our fiscal year begins on July 1st and then concludes on June 30th. So when we're talking about fiscal year '22, that's the year that we're in right now, about two and a half months in. So she's going to begin with a slide that outlines that. I'll make a note here and I know Kristin will do the same. The numbers regarding enrollment are projections. So you're going to see them as projections. As many of you know, those numbers will not be really finalized until the middle of October. So you're going to see where we are, where we have budgeted and know that we will come back in October, once those numbers are finalized. So Vice President Albritton will start with a sort of a snapshot of where we are, what we predict FY22 is going to look like. And then she's going to move to a discussion that outlines the three releases from Washington DC. The HERF dollars show you what each amount contained, how that money was distributed, both to the institution and directly to the students. And then sort of begin to lay out, so what do the federal guidelines tell us about how we can invest that money? So this is going to be an opportunity for many of you to sort of see that for the first time. She's then going to take us to, so where has the money been invested already? And give you a sense of what has already happened as a way then of setting us all up for now through the end of this calendar year, to really come together in community conversation and get your ideas for how we make investments to really support this entire institution. So that's the goal of this afternoon. She's going to give you all a slide that is detailing how you can bring forward your ideas. I want you to know that there'll be a variety of ways, including in-person and virtual conversations. So with that, we're at 1:36. Dr. Albritton is going to present until about 2:15 and then Amy will moderate some questions. So really looking forward to the conversation. I have Kristin just about 12 feet away. So I'm going to mask up, get out of the way, and she will take over. So just give us one second.
Good afternoon, everybody. Please forgive our logistics here. President Hughes is right-handed and I am left-handed. So you have to flip when you press the unmute button. Thank you all so much for being here. I'm thrilled to be here to have this conversation with you all today and show you some slides about our financial position, as President Hughes said, and talk about our HERF dollars and how we're going to invest those and talk about what the college can do with those funds. I believe we have a presentation, Amy? And I think we're ready for the first slide, Amy. So where I'd like to start is our current financial position. And I know you guys have heard me talk some about these figures and the way that they're broken down. And many of you will understand this document and have no issue. I'm going to walk everybody through so that we can all have a conversation where we start from the same place. So to start off, I can tell you that our total unrestricted operating budget request, our total operating revised budget for FY22 is $115.4 million. So you'll see that at the bottom. We'll go back up and talk about the pieces in a moment. But I wanted to draw your attention to that first. That's about $14 million better than what we projected for, where we came in for FY21. So remember, as President Hughes said, FY21 ran from July of 2020 to June of this year. And our current year is FY22. So what you're looking at now is the actuals, where we stopped the year in June 30th, and our revised budget based on our enrollment for the fall. So I know you heard a lot of talk about the FY22 budget in years past. We have a strange way of budgeting sometimes in higher ed. We do, we're working on the FY23 budget now. And in the same vein, we worked on the '22 budget this time last year. So what we do is revise a budget after enrollment comes in so that we can make sure that we are tying our expenses to what we actually think our revenues are going to be. So if we start at the top, if you think about our unrestricted revenues coming in three, two main buckets with a little extra from what we call other revenue. You can see here that we're projecting, and again, as President Hughes said, these are projections, being 1,900 students down. And that correlates to nearly $4.5 million down in tuition and fee revenue. You'll see sales and services projected to be down. And the thing I will call your attention to on that is in FY21, Jamie and Tecla and their teams did an outstanding job. We had an influx of funds from the state and all of that related to recovery from COVID. So as we move forward, we'll drop that number back down and budget more conservatively, more in line with what we've seen historically. Our state appropriation base is budgeted to be flat, so you'll see that there. And that brings us to unrestricted revenue of $109 million. And then we look at unrestricted expenses. So as you know, our unrestricted expenses go to things like, all the things it takes to run our college, facility operations, faculty and staff, part-time employees, advertising, all of the stuff that it takes us that is directly related to running our college and supporting our students, faculty and staff. So as you can see, we're closing FY21 with a $13.7 million surplus. So given the status of our budget in recent years compounded by last year's hiring freeze, the college currently has about 100 vacant positions. And though I'm preaching to the choir, as we would say in Georgia, you all know this and you know it well because you feel it every day. In addition, last year we received $5 million from the state and that was part of their COVID relief funding. And CCRI was awarded those federal funds from the state of Rhode Island to cover things like we backfilled security costs, other things that were related to the pandemic that they could help provide those funds for to save our state dollars. So with those two things combined, we were able to save $13.7 million. So by design, both of these circumstances contributed to the savings. And those savings are going to be essential as we move forward in filling those positions and helping to sustain the college for the next few years. And as we'll talk about in a minute, there are going to be two buckets of money. One is going to be this reserve fund that is set aside to sustain us for things that we cannot use HERF dollars for. And we'll talk about that in a minute and you'll understand a little better, I think. But it is important to distinguish that these are funds that are there for things that we are not going to be able to use the federal funds for. And there are plenty of things that we can't use the federal dollars for that we're going to need funds to sustain us. Next slide. So as you all know, we've talked several times about the HERF funding. And I'm just coming off strategic planning meetings where I talked to many of you about the HERF funding. I've already gotten some great emails with ideas. I thank you all for that. I know some have come in to President Hughes. So you guys have already responded for our ask for contributions to this conversation. So I'm going to walk us back through the HERF funding, what we got and how that was allocated to us. So as you know, in response to the pandemic, Congress included significant funding for higher education in three main acts. They were all called COVID Relief Acts. They're known as CARES I, CARES II, or CHRISA, and the American Rescue Plan, or ARP. So it provides for student emergency funds and for institutional costs that are directly related to COVID-19. allocations to each college and university were determined by the US Department of Education. And it's based on student enrollment. It's basically based on how many Pell students you have. The more Pell students you have, the more need there is, the more funding you get. So under the formula, CCRI was allocated $73.5 million. And as you can see here on the chart, let me, let's walk through the top part of the chart. So student financial aid. And what that means is, and you'll see there the asterisk, that means that the college is basically a pass-through for that funding. The federal government knows that we have a mechanism in place through Kelly and her office for a way to efficiently distribute funds to our students. And that is basically what those funds are for. So they set aside nearly $30 million for our students. And basically, we are, we're just the custodians of those funds. Kelly and her team had to work on the regulations for CCRI and how we would do that. But the intent of the funds was decided by the federal government and we had no real say in that. So $30 million of the $73.5 set aside right off the bat for students. So that leaves us with, goodness, $41 million for what's called institutional expenses. $44 million, excuse me. So those are things, those are set aside for things like PPE, additional staff to help clean, things that are in direct response to the pandemic or in our ability to be able to move instruction from an in-person modality to online. Those are exactly what those funds are for. So they have very strict rules, as I said, for how that can be used. They asked for the dollars to be spent before March of 2022. And Dave and I have many discussions about this. So we are very hopeful and I honestly have every belief that those funds will be extended, especially given the amount of the funds that have gone out across the country and the supply chain. It is taking a long time for people to get supplies and to get orders filled. So I have every, I think that their every intention is to extend those funds for another year. Next slide. So what's allowable? Things like financial aid grants to students, students' cost of attendance. And you can see these here and we can certainly take questions about any of these things. We'll talk a little bit about some examples in a minute. Emergency costs to students. I know that there, we have a mechanism in place for students to request these emergency funds. We were able to do vaccine incentives, faculty and staff training, staff our buildings for our COVID response. We bought lots of technology associated with the transition to distance learning and to remote work as we all spent 18 months in our homes, working, doing our work for the college. Also, we're able to cover loss revenue. And you'll see in a minute that last year we were able to cover $6 million of a deficit for '21 with HERF funding. So that's a big deal and it's been a big benefit to the college. Next slide. So as allowed under the federal rules, CCRI has already allocated $14 million of the $44 million awarded for just institutional expenses. So if you remember, 74 million, 30 million went directly to students. So $44 million is set aside for the institution. Again, things like PPE, increased cleaning costs, technology to deliver remote teaching. It generally, just as an FYI, can't be used for salaries or general operating costs. So of the $14 million, CCRI has already invested nearly $5 million in our students, in additional student support. We were able to spend about $2 million on debt forgiveness. And so many of you who work directly with our students, I know that you know better than anyone what kind of impact that can have. We did Accuplacer bootcamp support and vaccination awareness campaigns. All of these things will reduce barriers to our students, help them return, prepare them for success and promote a safe learning environment. All the things that we need to sustain us as a college as we move forward. So let's talk a little bit about the lost revenue. So we anticipate that our recovery from COVID will require at least two years. And we anticipate challenges to enrollment moving forward for the next couple of years. So consequently, we'll continue to use these funds over the next few years in anticipating those lost revenues. So, you know, as we look at enrollment projections, that's a big part of how we're deciding what we're doing with the $44 million that is set aside for the institution. We know that a portion of those funds are going to have to go to offset revenue losses. So again, you can see what we've done so far. And again, I wanted to ask you if there are any questions, but we'll save that for later. Thanks, Amy. Next slide. So what remains to be invested? So you can see here, we've spent, we've had $13 million in activity. We have $850,000 in commitments. And that's where we come up with our $14 million already spent. So that leaves us with $30 million that's available to cover the things that we, all of those things that we talked about, the kinds of things that we have spent it on already and any of these ideas that we come up with together. So what I thought we would do is go through some of the justification for the HERF funding. And I hope you guys will forgive me for reading some of this, but it's really important because the way that the funds can be used is very specific. So what our Grants Office has done is developed systems and tools for us to be able to work through these plans with you. So if you come forward with something that we're purchasing for HERF or for the college, one of the things that we're doing now is checking, is this something that we can use HERF funds for? If not, what other funding sources do we have available? So what the Grants Office is going to ask, excuse me, is this purchase related to COVID? Please explain how it fulfills one of the following allowable uses. Covering the cost of providing additional technology, hardware to students such as laptops or tablets, or covering the additional cost of technology fees. So like we said, anything for technology to keep our students going, faculty and staff, those things are covered. Purchasing, leasing, or renting additional instructional equipment and supplies, such as laboratory equipment or computers to reduce student sharing equipment or supplies during a single class period and to provide time for disinfection between uses. So these funds are set aside to help us socially distance. We know that as we have less students in our classrooms, we may have to have additional courses. That's what those funds are for. Campus safety and operations. If the purchase is to enhance the safety of the campus community from COVID, how does it fulfill that purpose? So you got, you have to be able to explain in terms of how it relates to COVID because we're going to be required to answer those questions when we report back to the federal government. Purchasing, leasing, or renting additional equipment or software to enable distance learning or upgrading campus Wi-Fi access, extending open networks to parking lots, public spaces, et cetera. Again, all related to the fact that we are in a semi-remote environment and that we have to be much more agile in the way that we provide instruction. Providing additional support systems that help students overcome additional barriers that have arisen as a result of COVID. Things that they might not otherwise have experienced and anything that might complete them from completing their education. We're going to ask you how it fulfills that purpose. Next slide. So we have several ways that we are going to reach out in the near future to get your ideas and solicit feedback on what we've done so far and your ideas on how we can spend these funds. So by the end of September, we'll start having both virtual and in-person conversations to get your input, as President Hughes said. We'll also have an email address available for you to submit ideas and virtual office hours so that you can stop by, send us messages. We'll have several different ways for you to reach out. And one that I'm particularly excited about is our online discussion board, where you can post ideas, see ideas from your colleagues and comment or react to those ideas. And this is one of the things that I heard you all during the strategic planning sessions. You really want to have multiple ways to communicate and for us to communicate with each other. So part of what we're doing here is really trying to open that up. We will have in-person, we'll have virtual chats, we'll have an email if you'd like to be able to send a static message to us. And we'll also have this idea board where you all can collaborate together. It's an open forum for our college community to contribute to the conversation about how to use the funding. You'll be able to tag your ideas based on categories that we talked about earlier and then see everyone else's ideas. You'll be able to add on, make comments, vote if you'd like. It's really a place for us to have a little, a little bit of fun in talking about how we're going to spend these dollars to help our community. I'm really excited about this college-wide engagement and can't wait to see your suggestions. So the other thing that we've prepared, just to get our juices flowing a little bit, is a little Q and A type of questions so that you will get an idea of what it is that we're looking for. So one of the Q and As that, one of the samples that we came up with was, we had to add two sections of our lab for our course because social distancing only allows for 50% of the normal amount of students. Can we use CARES funds to pay for the teachers for the additional labs? Yes, you can. We can use CARES funds to pay for the teachers for the additional labs because the expense was incurred to implement COVID-19-related social distancing requirements. Can we use CARES to purchase textbooks for students? It depends. CARES funds are available to support any component of a student's cost of attendance. We'd need to have our financial aid office work with people to figure out eligibility. But what this one says to me and what I would like to remind you all of is that it will absolutely be a group effort. This will be an effort for our community to navigate together. Can we offer a course that we normally offer for free to students and charge the staff to CARES? No. We can't use payroll costs for CARES funding without a connection to COVID-19. If we normally offer the course, there does not seem, and there does not seem to be a connection to COVID-19. That's the reason why that one's a no. We, now what the Grants Office would do is ask some follow-up questions to ensure there's no connection to COVID-19. Because while we're going to follow the rules to the letter of the law, we're also going to make sure that we are being strategic in investing these funds. So for example, did we have to hire additional staff because of social distancing? Is that why we had to have additional staff? That may be our answer. So I know that there are many, many ideas out there about how we can use these funds. And wait, I have one more. So we're developing a program for all students to assist them in preparing for a placement exam. Many students fell behind during the pandemic due to distance learning. Can we pay for the curriculum development instruction with CARES funds? Yes, you can, as long as we have evidence that the reason students fell behind was because of the pandemic, due to distance learning, instead of being face-to-face instruction and the many other myriad of reasons why our students may be having a harder time now. So with that, before I've taken your questions, and I'm not sure how long I've been talking, hopefully not too long on a Friday afternoon, I want to thank you all again for your continued support of our students, of me and my staff, your diligence in helping us manage our operating expenses through the pandemic. Certainly encouraged about the future and I'm thrilled and very excited to work through this exercise with you all and looking forward to our conversations.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. So if there are questions, and I hope everybody there who's watching has the ability to type a question. We have a couple that have already come in. And so our first question is actually from Becca Carroll on my team. And she asks, are scholarships, so this fall, this year, we offer COVID recovery scholarships and COVID finish scholarships. Are we going to be able to offer scholarships using the HERF funds as well? Or will that have to come from a different pot of money?
Absolutely. So that's one of those questions where we'll have to work closely with Kelly and Sarah and their offices to figure out the best way to do that. But I would anticipate that as we move through the pandemic, that is going to be one of the most essential uses for these funds. I don't have to, aside the fact that it's our mission and we are all here for one reason or another, for our students, they are our revenue drivers. So they're the reason that we're here, they keep the doors open. So without students, we don't have jobs and we don't have. So that exactly would be a perfectly acceptable and great idea about how we use these funds to help sustain us.
Great, thank you. Now, this is a quiet group on a Friday afternoon, I have to say. So Angela Marshall does have a question and she's saying, are these funds the funds that we use to provide the vaccine incentive?
Yes. So part of the institutional funds were used to provide vaccine incentives, yes. So we cannot use the funds that were set aside for students. So that $30 million, as we said earlier, was, we're just a pass-through. It was put into our bank account simply because we have a way to allocate it, to get it quickly into the pockets of our students. But out of the remaining $44 million, that's exactly where the vaccine incentives were funded from, yes.
Great, thank you. We have another great question that just came in from Pam Christman, asking, can we use CARES funding to supply students with contactless wireless printing options, such as setting up printing stations to which students can print to wirelessly? That could help our students who don't have access to a printer.
Absolutely. That's a wonderful idea. And I hope that you will, you will codify that and send it in in an email or put it on the idea board because that is exactly what these funds are for. That's a great idea.
Great, thank you. And I don't know if you'll have the answer to this question. I'm not sure if you're the right person for us. But do you know if the college will be offering the vaccine incentive to faculty?
So that is, that's a great question. And that's one that we have certainly have seen in, it's something that we'd have to take under. it's something that we'd have to take under discussion. Now whether or not it would be allowable, I'm not positive. I have not seen that that's been done in other colleges, and maybe it has. But we can certainly, I would love to have the idea posed so that we can work with our Grants Office and the federal Grants Office to make sure it's allowable. And then, you know, there's many decisions that have to go into what these funds are spent on. So I can't answer institutionally whether that's something that we would do, and we can certainly find out if whether that would be, whether or not that would be allowable under grant.
Great, thank you. Professor Sandra Sniezeby has a question about where can we find the guidelines for the use of the funds so people can go read them and understand before they submit an idea or for consideration?
Sure. So that's a great suggestion, and I think what I will do when I leave this office is go make sure that the the website that we have being built for this purpose, one of the links that we will put there are the guidelines for this purchase. And we'll make sure to share with Amy so that we can get that link in CCI Daily and get that out to you all. And again, you know, I am a real lover of feedback. So as we start doing this as a community, my expectation and my hope, as we start talking to each other face-to-face and virtually and have our board up in the coming days, that you all will provide feedback about how we can do this better.
Great, thank you. We have another great question from Professor Leslie Kilgore. Can the funds be used to hire additional advisors, counselors, tutors, or academic coaches if it's framed as for students who fell behind?
Absolutely. And that is, that's something that we have, I know Vice President Enright has in the works. We are trying to build that cash of folks up now. That's absolutely allowable and a great idea.
And on, I actually have a question posed. It's a follow-up to that question. Are there restrictions in terms of the, if it can be funded or if a position can be funded using the HERF funds? Is there an end date because it is a grant-funded position?
Yep. So there is, there is an end date to these funds. So that's why it's important to remember as we think about HERF funds, they are intended to sustain us through the pandemic. And what I would want you guys to remember is we should think about one-time investments. That doesn't mean we can't hire advisors and things like that that we know we need for our students, but it's not a wholesale way for us to hire new people. That's why we talked about the $13.7 million that by design we set aside for the college to be able to fill some of those vacant positions. Because HERF is not, HERF is not the, it's not a magic pill for how we're going to hire those 100 positions. It's just not going to be allowable. But if we have short-term needs for positions or things like that, that absolutely would be allowable. And if, the hope would be if we hired positions and the college was able to, so we should see them as investment dollars. And that's to put it short and sweet, Amy, we should see them as one-time investments, ways to set us up for success later, to be able to drive our revenue later down the road or to sustain us as we take these revenue hits. Because, you know, as we, as we talked about, the enrollment numbers now are just projections because we just don't know. I've been in higher ed many, many years, and I think we've discussed several times. I've never seen everything sort of come together in this way where we don't have a clear picture of what's going to happen in terms of enrollment. There are lots of variables that are involved, and many of them are outside of our control.
Great, thank you. I'm going to mess up this name, so forgive me. Linda Sarkisian is asking if the funds can be used to support students who struggle with food insecurity? And it would be something that we could put funds on their college ID that could be used on campus in our dining spaces?
Absolutely. And again, Linda, I hope that you will, you will submit that idea to the board. So when we have things like food insecurity and, so I would like to take 10 seconds and walk you through how I go through a strategic sort of budgeting with that kind of question. So as I get a request like that, we would like to buy, give food dollars for students with food insecurity. I'm going through the different buckets of funds in my mind. Can't be used with state money, can be used with HERF or maybe some other kind of federal funding. So if we can, if we can get a grant or we have other funds available to us, we may be able to fulfill that need with some other funding and be able to keep our HERF funds to use for something else. But absolutely, the short answer is yes, that would be a perfectly acceptable use of the funds. Great idea.
Thank you. And I think you may have mentioned this in the presentation, but if you could just clarify. Jean Decofe asked, does this money have to be spent down by a certain date, and if so, what is that date?
Yep. So the original date for CCI, and the way that the the acts are written is that they must be spent within a year of it being awarded. So all of our, the last award we got was May of 2020, May of 2021, excuse me. So initially, our funds are set to expire May of 2022. Now, my hope and my expectation, with as many federal grants as I've worked on, I have every reason to believe those funds will be extended. And what typically won't happen, and we have no, we have no assurances of that, I do believe we'll have another year. What I do not think will happen is that the federal government will come to us in May of 2022 and ask us to give it back. So I do believe as long as we have programs in the chute and we're moving through and showing that we have the ability to spend the funds and spend them well and spend them along the guidelines that the federal government has issued to us, we are respectful and we're good stewards of the money. I have every reason to believe we'll be given at least another year.
Great, thank you. Candy Yamal Chinchilla asks, can funds be available for student bus passes?
For student?
Bus passes?
Bus passes, absolutely. Yeah, I think if we can, if we can make a correlation to COVID-19, I mean, I think that's, that is the one caveat. Now, maybe we can find a way to provide emergency grants for students in a way because they need that support. That's an avenue. And as I walked through the sort of questions for justification earlier, that's what Paul and Ann and Dave are all very well skilled at, is trying to find a way that we can work within the guidelines. There are very strict guidelines, but look, our goal is to spend these mon, spend these monies the best way we can for our students and our community. So we are really going to dig deep and work with people on how we can do that.
Great, thank you. Our next question comes from Shanna Wells, and she asks, are these funds usable by our workforce partnership students?
Yes, I would say absolutely, as long as we can make a correlation to COVID-19 or the distance learning. I mean, yeah, Paul and I might have to have a discussion on it, but I really do think any of the workforce partnerships, if we can make a correlation that we are re-contributing to the economy in Rhode Island, you know, I think we're going to have a hard time being turned down for that. We'll talk about it later, Paul. Absolutely, if there is, there's a need for our workforce partnership students, we will work with everyone to make sure that we can find the right avenue.
Great, thank you. Gillian Lang in the library asks about the, she has a question about the continued funding issue once the HERF funds expire. She, she would like to lend mobile hotspots to students through the library, but there is a monthly cost to the data plan. Could the college implement this, or would we need to show how we could sustain the cost of that past HERF?
Yep. So not necessarily, no. Now, that's a very good question because she's obviously written some grants before, good question. Because in many of them, you do have to show how you're going to be able to sustain the service past the end date of the grant. Now, with the HERF funds in particular, they are designed to get us through these and to help us support our students with what their needs are for the next year, hopefully, fingers crossed, two years. So, and what I can tell you is, is as we invest in these things for the next two years, things like that for hotspots for our students, I'm sure that if we need to invest in our operating dollars and things for our students moving forward, we may have to talk about prioritize and deprioritize something else that we've been doing so that we can prioritize those things for our students. But monthly fees are totally fine, we'll cover them for as long as we can. And then talk about if it's, if it's working out the way people anticipate, we'll talk about how we prioritize that into an operating budget.
Great, thank you. And a follow-up question somebody just submitted on the same issue, on the funding issue. You know, Gillian brought up a, just that data associated with those hotspots. But we're talking about purchasing some pretty big technology. And as the funds become unavailable in the future, how will the college sustain the technology and hardware refreshment requirements as the equipment ages in the coming years? If we invest in, you know, just a million dollars in the HiPlex classrooms in two years or three years, they may need to be updated. How will the college sustain that and those costs associated with the technology?
That's a great question, and I think that the beauty of a, of a technology budget is that as you add new things, you have to be willing to let others roll off. So again, we as a college will need to prioritize things when we get to that point. If we're going to, we have to be able, so if we buy things now, we're going to use HERF dollars to maintain them for the next two years. As we get to a point where we need to replace them, we will let other things fall off and we'll roll those into our technology budget moving forward. So we keep a rolling replacement budget for technology, and those pieces would obviously, I'm assuming in two years will still be a priority. And if they are, they will roll into that budget. But having said that, it is, it is about priorities. We can't, just from a pure budgeting standpoint, you guys know this, we can't keep layering on without removing some of the things that are less important to us. So as we think about, we don't have a never-ending pot of money. We have to take what we have and prioritize those items and make sure we're spending it in the best way possible.
Great, thank you. Next question, Deb Watson, I love this question. Can funds be used to add a virtual tour option for interested students and families that may not want to come to campus? Is that, and I don't know if that falls under marketing, and I know we've had many conversations about is marketing an allowable use? But in this case, this is, this would be a virtual tour?
Absolutely. I mean, I think, I can certainly think of how we would tie a virtual tour to the effects of COVID-19. We all know that we, it's part of social distancing, absolutely. That's a great idea. That's a really good idea. I like that one. I like that one. Let's make sure we get that one in writing.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have another question from Yamal, and can funds be used to make studying pods? You know, areas for students to study and listen to online courses here on campus versus maybe at their house or some other place?
You know, I have to tell you, you guys are on your game because I haven't heard a single thing yet that we cannot do. So I'm really thrilled with that idea as well, and I do hope you guys will, please, don't lose that one. Send them to me an email as well, and we will get you a place to submit them. Absolutely, we can certainly do that.
Great. And another question from Leslie, another great idea too, is can we use the funds to fit additional conference rooms with WebEx and Zoom technology for remote meetings?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Okay. Why don't we give it, just making sure I didn't miss any questions. If I did, my apologies. I'm going quickly back through. We don't have any more questions. I can give it a minute if somebody is typing quickly. Nope. And, oh, I do have a question. When will the virtual board be available for launch so people can start submitting all these amazing ideas?
Sure. So email's available now. We'll start doing the virtual and in-person conversations within the next two weeks. And then my hope is that in October, we'll have this board launched. It does, you can see how pretty it was. So it will take a little bit of work, but we're going to work as quickly as we can to get that up there. And then, you know, if someone sends an email and would like us to post it on the board for them, once it gets up, we can certainly do that. But I want people to feel like, please bring your ideas. These, this has been incredibly helpful for me, and I know my team is listening, and they're excited about how we're going to implement some of these ideas. So any way you can get them to us, we're excited to have them as soon as possible.
So, and with that, so before that board is up and running, how would you like people to submit these ideas so we don't lose the ones that we're talking about today? Is it, is there an email address that we can set up pretty quickly?
Yes. So what I will do, again, when I leave this room, I'm going to make sure that we have, I mean, you can always send them to me. And Annabelle and I will absolutely get those emails. What I would like to do is have an email set up so that we can keep them all in one spot. So I'll get that to you so we can get that out to you all today.
Great.
I'm going to be calling about an email address.
For those who are on the call, yeah, perfect. Okay, so I think that wraps us up. Kristin, why don't you close this out for the afternoon?
So thank you all for coming. As President Hughes says, we are so very proud of all of you and what you're doing for our students. I am thrilled about this work and so excited to have these conversations with you all. And thank you for coming on a Friday afternoon. It means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to my staff. Thank you, Amy, for pulling this together, and thank you to my staff for helping, you know, get us ready for this. So I'm excited about the work. Can't wait to see you all. Please let me know if you have questions or thoughts. We will, looking forward to the work. Thank you.